Is, uh, I know who this is.
Oh, Ted.
Well, I guess. There was an ant on the...
It is my pleasure to call this concurrent meeting the School Administrative Unit Number Twelve and the Londonderry School District School Board on this day, Tuesday, March 20th, 2012, at 7:03 PM. Welcome all. I would now ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Letha, could you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Letha, welcome.
Thank you.
Pleased to have you. Okay. First order of business is the election of the chairperson.
Our second order of business is the...
Welcome, Steve.
Welcome back, Carter.
Oh, yes, oh, welcome back, Steve. Congratulations.
Nate, you were wondering when you were gonna get that, buddy. Has been a long day.
Hey, do you know Steve?
Yes.
He knows. I'm the guy that, when I was chair, I never started the meeting late.
That's right. Absolutely.
That's true.
Which is why he doesn't recognize you. He wasn't here.
Okay. Okay, our first order of business is to elect a chairperson. So, for the public, all those that are here, one person, thank you. And for the viewing audience, let me review the process and procedure. As per our attorney, the following process will be utilized for the nomination and election of the chairperson. I will open the floor for a nomination of a chairperson. I will accept the nomination and ask for a second. I will then call for discussion and then call for a vote. If the nomination fails to achieve a required majority, three, I will open the floor again for a nomination and repeat the process. Please be advised that we will handle one nomination at a time. During the discussion phase, a board member is free to speak for or against the nomination and indicate if the nomination fails, they would nominate another specific individual. Once a chairperson is elected, the chairperson will take over the meeting and conduct the election for vice-chairperson in the same manner. Okay? Does everyone understand? All right? I will now open the floor for a nomination.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Robinson.
I would like to nominate John LaFerrier.
Do I have a second? Second, Nancy Hendricks. Discussion. Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. LaFerrier, congratulations.
Thank you.
I will now take my stuff.
I must say, I haven't been practicing for this, so...
I didn't vote, I don't think.
I can slide over.
There's a question from the secretary. Did you vote for yourself?
Uh, no, I didn't. Can I vote for myself?
Yeah.
Well, then I do vote for myself.
Guess who's running the big top? All right.
You can save this. Come on over.
She doesn't chief because it's lonely.
Okay. So, I guess in accordance with the nominations, we need a nomination for vice-chair? Do I have a nomination? Second. Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
You're opposed?
No. I missed the vote.
Hans will never forget it.
That's five, nothing, so congratulations, Miss Vice Chair. Okay. Let me see where I'm at.
Okay. Couldn't do appointments now, John?
Consent, okay. So, appointments, attendance officer?
Yes, we're recommending SRO Brad Warner to be the attendance officer for the rest of this year and next year.
Okay. Nate, do you need a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, do I...
So, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nate, schoolboy secretary?
Yes, we would like to renominate Mary Soers as secretary to the board.
I make a motion to nominate Mary Wing Soers for secretary of the board.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Shouldn't she leave the room?
How could she take that?
She just wants to know... She wants to know who motioned and who seconded.
I'm sorry. Steve motioned, Nancy second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's five, nothing. Okay, Nate, readoption of current policies and regulations?
The board should make a motion to readapt all of the current policies and regulations except policy CI and the readoption of the investment policy DFA, which we have to do separately.
Okay. So, do I have a nomination?
Move to readapt all current policies with the exception of policy CI and DFA.
Second.
Second. Motion by John, second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Policy CI, there is a typo under middle school. It should read Ms. Plackhart instead of Ms. Arnold. Otherwise, the rest of this is same.
Okay.
Yeah, those letters are so close together.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to accept policy CI with the changes as notated by the superintendent.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The administration would also like to recommend to the school board the readoption of the investment policy DFA. Our auditors, as we did last year, recommended to us that the investment policy be done separately each year and so noted in the minutes.
Okay, motion?
I would make a motion that we readapt investment policy DFA.
Second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Motion by Nancy, second by John. Discussion?
Just one quick question. This is the same, this policy is unchanged from last year?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing? Okay. Questions and announcements?
Andy does.
Andy, there he is.
And I think Jay does.
Jay.
And I would like to make an announcement.
Two minutes, tell you again.
I like the chair. I would just like to update the board on Destination Imagination. We had eighteen teams participate this year. The students have done a wonderful job. Their advisors and mentors have been there with them throughout the season. They just had their recent competition and all the students performed quite well. But we'd like to recognize the four teams that will be moving on to the states. Those will be held at Winnicott High School on March 31st. At the high school, we have the Melanson Team, which consists of Sarah Anderson, Farrah Ash, Becky Khan, Ragnar Kemp, Catherine Losaki, Kyle Malley, and Lauren Melanson. The Darren Team from LMS, consisting of Casey Darren, Andrew Marsden, and Evan Polvinsky. The O'Connor Team from Matthew Thornton, consists of Neil Barron, who actually attends South School, Gillian and Jimmy Fitzgibbons, Ian Godspeed, Patrick Hegarty, Lauren Mullen, and Sarah Sessa. And the, last but not least, the Lynch Team from South Elementary School, consisting of Hannah Brown, Brittany Fernandez, Abby Follinsby, and Gillian Lynch. I apologize to anybody out there if I maybe slightly mispronounce a name, but I do want to congratulate the kids for an outstanding job this season and we wish them the best of luck at states.
Thanks, Andy.
Geez, that was good. That was timely. We had you on the clock up here.
Good evening. I am pleased to announce that the Verizon Wireless Arena in Manchester, New Hampshire has confirmed our graduation date of Friday, June 15th, at 7:00 PM. We will be announcing that and sending out letters to the class of 2012, their families, the school board, and community members about information with Senior Week, which kicks off with our senior project, followed by our class trip, senior supper on Wednesday, baccalaureate on Thursday, senior breakfast on Friday morning, graduation rehearsal, and then the pinnacle of it all, the graduation ceremony that Friday evening. We also, Mike Dolphin and I, sent out letters to our top ten honored students, recognizing them. They'll be, of course, recognized at baccalaureate and at graduation as well. And finally, that information, we can make public at the end of the week. So, we'll be recognizing those seniors in classes and then sharing that with the board as well. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Nate?
Yes, I'd like to make the community aware that our Special Olympics basketball team will be playing, the Pinkerton Special Olympics basketball team, on March 29th at UMass Lowell from 6:30 to 8:30. Entrance is free, donations are accepted. This is the second year in a row that the kids have been able to do it, and it's a lot of fun. They get to ride the bus with the Pinkerton team all the way down to Lowell. So, it's a wonderful experience for all of them. And then, on March 30th, our Special Olympic basketball teams will be participating in the New Hampshire State Special Olympic Basketball Tournament down in Portsmouth. So, kids will have a great time. And then, I don't know, Kaffa may want to mention something about the band trip.
Well, I...
Oh, you've been somewhere?
Yeah. It was... Okay, so, I don't know if anybody knows what we did, but I'll try and go through it if you want. On Friday morning, we left about seven o'clock, and Mr. Green, Mr. Parent were with us too, which was a lot of fun. And we went to Denver Mall, after we stopped at Denver Mall, we went to New York, and we got there around three. And we got ready, we got some pizza for our rooms, and then we all went to see Wicked on Broadway, which was amazing, I gotta tell you honestly. The next day, we, let's see, we got up around 7:30, and we headed to, around nine o'clock we left, and went to the staging area on 45th Street. And we waited there for about an hour, and they kept kind of putting us in formation and then moving us a couple of feet, and then putting us in formation, moving us a couple of feet, and then it just kept breaking up. And then we had to, and then they finally moved us on the street. We had to wait half an hour to finally keep going in the parade. But that was okay. So, we finished around one, and then we all got, well, we started about one, finished around two fifteen-ish. We got on the buses, and we actually all, the boys went first and changed, and then the girls went on and changed into nice clothes, and we also had Subway footlong sandwiches. And then we went to see the Chieftains. Actually, first, we went to the Museum of Natural History, which was cool, but we only got an hour there, so it wasn't nearly as much time to see it all. But then we went to see the Chieftains at Carnegie Hall, which was a very interesting show. They played a lot of Irish stuff, and it was really cool to see Carnegie Hall in its full force. And the next day, we, even though the parade was done, we still had a lot of fun because we went to the Satchel Liberty, and we all got to go over there, and it was overall an amazing experience.
Yeah, most of you got to come back, too.
Yeah, well, there were sixteen people left at the Satchel Liberty, and then we had to wait for them. So, but all in all, it was an amazing...
It wasn't China.
It was an amazing trip. So, most of them were chaperones. They got all the kids on, but they were chaperones, so... But all in all, an amazing trip.
John?
If I can throw something in here, just to make the public aware, it was on londonderrynh.net today, but the superintendent received an email from a resident of Danbury, Connecticut, who happened to be in the Danbury Fair Mall when this swarm of 300 kids comes crashing in off a bus. And like any resident, I guess, they kind of expected, okay, things are gonna get loud and rowdy, and it's gonna be chaotic here for a while. And the letter went on to say that the resident was simply amazed at how quiet and polite and orderly all the band members were. They placed their orders, got their stuff, and then I think the phrase was faded into the woodwork, virtually unnoticedable. Now, I was a kid once, when the Danbury Fair Mall was actually a fairgrounds, come to think of it, but now that I'm kind of old and crotchety, you know, a bus comes crashing in, and you figure long lines, and everything's gonna be unpleasant for a while, so it's really refreshing to see somebody not only being so impressed with a bunch of people who simply weren't that way, but who took the time to find out where they send a letter to the editor to compliment them on it. So, thank you personally, and thank you, Andy, and Friends of Music, and the entire band, for representing the town so well.
Nancy?
What?
Nothing. Stay with us. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Move the consent agenda. Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? I'm gonna do this, well. Before we take the vote, Sue Kimble, who's the administrative assistant at Moose Hill, will be retiring. Sue was the first administrative assistant at Moose Hill. She has been a key factor in the successful operation of Moose Hill Kindergarten. Her eleven years of dedication to the staff and students has greatly contributed to the positive attitude at the school. Sue is the go-to person for parents and staff. She will be greatly missed, and we wish her the very best in her well-deserved retirement. Sue, thank you.
Can I say something?
You may, absolutely.
You know, I'm sure Sue doesn't remember this, because I was probably one of a million people that called her, but she was actually the first person that I met in this district, because I was, of course, looking, you know, at the district, and I wanted to see our kindergarten, so Sue gave me the tour. And she was warm and outgoing and friendly and very patient. You know, maybe some of you remember, you know, how difficult it is to send your child off to kindergarten. She was very reassuring and patiently answered every single question that I had and made quite an impression on me. So, thank you, Sue, for your service.
Steve? All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have nothing? Mary, do we, we don't have to go down each of the dates for the minutes? We're okay with that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Meetings that are coming up, April 3rd, 2011, 7:00. It's a regular meeting in the town office.
Oh, well. 2011?
Is that 12?
No, but it says 11. It should be 12.
They do say 2011 here. Okay.
It is 2012.
It is 2012, okay.
Yes, but when are the meetings?
You had them already, so we're done.
Back to the future.
You got April off.
Get in the DeLorean, John.
April 3rd, 2012, 7:00 PM, regular town meeting at the town offices. April 17th, 2012, 7:00 PM, regular town meeting at the town offices. And then we have approval meetings for the remainder of July coming up, right, which we'll discuss. Okay? Superintendent's report?
Yes, Andy is going to provide the board with an assessment report.
Is he still on the clock?
Yes.
One and a half minutes for this one, Andy.
Oh. My colleagues would be thrilled.
Lights?
I'll get them.
Not too low.
Yeah, traditionally, we get out of the way so we can see the screen, too.
It's good. It's not too low. Yeah, yeah. They can see it at home, 'cause they're feeding it out.
Thank you very much. I wanted to review with the board some of the data from the recent kneecap testing to kind of clarify some things and go over some things as well as update what we use the data for. First of all, I'm looking at the kneecap reading. We have the Matthew Thornton, North-South, Londonderry Middle School, Londonderry High School. In terms of the recent reporting that came out, and there was a lot of talk about, I felt it was important to clarify to the community exactly where we were at. The first number under the whole school, and then it says students without IEP, that is the percent of students that were proficient or better on the kneecap reading. So, at Matthew Thornton, that was 86%, North School that was 83%, South School that was 83%, Londonderry Middle School was 76, and Londonderry High School was 71%. Now, part of kneecap is it's divided into subcategories, and the three that impact the district the most are the whole school, educationally disadvantaged, and the educational disability. It's also important to note that we plan our curriculum to meet the needs of the students with IEPs. So, when we look at the reading results for kneecap, we also need to look at them in terms of how our students are performing who do not have an IEP. So, at Matthew Thornton, we have 90% of our students are proficient or better, 87% at North School, 90% at South School, 85% at Londonderry Middle, and 80% at Londonderry High School. We do that because, again, we build our curriculum around the students without an IEP, and then we accommodate and modify to meet the needs of those students. But all students are put into the whole school category. Under the educational disability, economically disadvantaged, excuse me, category, we have two schools at the elementary level that don't have a sufficient cell size to meet the criteria. You have to have ten students. Now, we do have ten students in some grades, but we don't have enough students in the number of grades to meet that cell size. So, they do not get a score for that. The one building that is over, that is South School, and this year they performed at a rate of 84%, which is a significant increase from last year, and they had worked hard. I will caution that you really, looking at 2011 to 2010, remember there are two different groups of students. So, to simply say things got better is not necessarily a true statement when the students change. John?
Andy, if I recall, in the beginning of the year, we talked about a shift of kids from one area to another.
Right.
Would any of those kids have moved from north to south and been in the disadvantaged group?
Potentially, yes. Because the disadvantaged group is made up of the students who receive free and reduced lunch, and as we all know, that number went up significantly this year. So, part of the reason for the large jump also could be simply the number of families that were signing up for free and reduced. So, a child who maybe was proficient in distinction last year but wasn't receiving free and reduced lunch wouldn't have been in that category.
So, that's how you determine?
Correct. Okay. In the economic, educational disability category, again, North School doesn't have a sufficient cell size, but I do want to just recognize their fourth grade had a significant jump. They went from 23% last year, proficient or better, to 50% this year, but they don't meet the cell size as a school. The other two buildings, Matthew Thornton and South, meet the criteria, and I would also note that both of those contain self-contained programs for special ed. So, there are a number of students in there that have specific disabilities, some that are quite severe, and I would also remind the board that all students take some form of the kneecap. It may be in an alt form, but they still need to submit a portfolio to the state, and they receive a score, proficient, or something along that scale. In terms of the middle school, again, there was a lot to be made of that, and in reality, our reading scores did not change from last year. And at the high school, we see a little bit of a dip, but I think that becomes a little clearer as we move through the presentation. And at any time, please stop me, I live with the numbers all the time, so they make sense to me, but I'd be happy to explain.
Andy, do you want to also mention regarding the AL, what the state requires is that the kids be videotaped, all right? Parents can opt out of the videotaping, and a number of our parents have, but what happens then is the state gives you a zero for that student. So, even though the parent says, no, you can't videotape my child through, and we have no control over that, the state will still give you a zero for that student.
What if they don't come?
You have a certain number of days in a window in which to give the test, and then they will mark you down if you don't have a certain percentage of the kids taking the exam.
So, if they don't come, they don't, they get a zero, too?
Yeah, pretty much.
The other piece, just to note, Steve, on the AL portfolio, is that, for a special ed child in one of our self-contained program, takes hours upon hours to create, and then to collate it. You're looking at a staff member probably spending somewhere between 60 and 100 hours per child to create the portfolio. So, it's very, very extensive, and even if you have the portfolio, if you don't have the videotape, it's not accepted.
How many hours?
In a lot of cases, it's 60 to 100 hours. This is a year-long process.
60 to 100 hours. Could you tell me the benefits to the child?
Well, from the child's point of view, what is happening, it's my daily work, all right? So, from the child's standpoint, they're doing what they would do daily, but from the staff member's standpoint, it's now taking all the lessons and things that I have done, and now, I'm gonna use the word repackaging, which might not be the best word, into a portfolio that I can send off to a reader.
So, the child doesn't perceive it's a test? It's a daily process?
It's a daily process, yes. So, there isn't a, I wouldn't say there's a large negative to the child, but at the same time, when you...
I was actually looking for the positive.
The positive is that they're doing their regular curriculum.
Okay.
The negative would be the distraction of the video, because that is not done every day.
Nancy, did you have a question?
Yeah. Can you tell me how, or tell us how we're comparing in terms of proficiency for state standards?
In terms of state standards?
Yes.
Well, if we were looking at the elementary level, the state is 79%. If you could answer the bottom chart, the first number, the elementary folks are at 79%, and students without disabilities in the state are 85%. So, all of our three elementary programs are exceeding the state. Okay? And I think that somewhat got lost. And then at the middle school and the high school, we traditionally have been slightly behind the state during my time there and now, and part of that is also, we have made the conscious decision as a district not to send special ed students out of the district. So, at the middle school, we had approximately eighty test takers that would be special ed. Now, some of those are in special ed programs, others are learning disabled, and approximately the same number at the high school.
Thank you.
I'll move on to math, I think. In terms of the overall math results, first of all, there is a concern in the state and in the nation regarding math. That is no secret. What is happening with the kneecap, as we move towards the common core, we're heading in a direction of algebra in the eighth grade, which is a shift. And further into the presentation, I'll show you a little bit about that shift and what it means. But again, in terms of how we performed, you're looking at our elementary schools at 82, 74, and 81, proficient or better. Those are all improvements on last year. I do caution the different kids, but we are putting a number of strategies in. We do see insufficient cell sizes again, and I would credit some of that to our RTI program, which is the Response to Intervention, which is intended to provide students with services prior to their need for an IEP and hopefully correcting the situation before it warrants an IEP. At the middle school, we see a struggle in math, but it's pretty much been in the same category, so they're really, we have some work to do there, which we'll be elaborating on later. And at the high school, we saw our number go down, but I think that somewhat gets explained later on. And where there's a significant problem, both at the middle school and high school across the state of New Hampshire, is with the students with disabilities. Because the kneecap test, if you're at high school, you're really looking at being an Algebra II student. If you're at the middle school, you're really looking at having an introduction or a greater depth of understanding with algebra. So, as a result, we're ramping up the curriculum, and at the same time, we still have students who we are programming to meet their needs rather than making them fit the program.
Andy, John?
Andy, as specifically as we can, what kinds of things that we might remember from our own school days are students not... our own school days are students not being able to perform on? Does it come down to, I don't know, polin- Polynomials, thank you. Quadratic equations, whatever?
I think we really, and this is, I actually went over and met with two junior classes and we had a discussion. And part of the issue is for probably about twenty percent of our population, they had the material that was on the test maybe one, if not two, years ago. And some of it is the recall. They're now sitting in maybe an AP class or a calculus class, and they're not quite sure about remembering all their geometry. That happens. The second piece is, as we'll see a little later on with the slides, we have some students who are on a track of taking pre-algebra, Algebra I, and are in college prep geometry. And yet, they're basically testing a test that has ingredients or components of Algebra II. Yet, one year later, they'll take Algebra II and they've got a very solid foundation for the college entrance. So it's kind of that preparation for college versus one testing entity. But, go ahead.
So if these numbers are uniformly bad across the state, and a lot of it seems to be the result of structural flaws in the test, well, so many questions come up. Why doesn't the state fix it? Why are we penalized on something that's at least partly to do with bad test writing? And why are we forced to waste our time dealing with something that has largely to do with bad test writing?
John, I think as Andy gets into the report a little bit later, you'll see some significant differences in scores based on the number of credits that students have taken at the high school and their course sequence. So, which I think will answer in part your question.
And I would also note that we, as a district, approximately two and a half years ago, made the conscious decision, since the Common Core was going to be adopted, that we would start to invest our time, energy, and resources in preparation for the Common Core, which there are already portions of the kneecap test that are covering elements of the Common Core. And I'll give you an example. Two years ago, the middle school math program was up for review. We made the decision, from both an economic and a curriculum standpoint, that it didn't make sense to go out and purchase or change what we were doing when, two years later, we might be changing again. What we did was, we did a number of things in-house to address some of the areas we had concerns about. But the actual middle school piece is now, through the regular curriculum cycle, is forming their committee, and I would be bringing a recommendation to the board in next year's budget cycle. So that was kind of somewhat intentional.
I might have missed something. If you could connect the dots for me, how does that relate to what we were just talking about?
Simply that, again, where in the cycle at the middle school, sixth grade math is your numbers, fractions, decimals, percent. Seventh grade, about twenty percent are taking pre-algebra, the rest are taking math seven. Eighth grade, twenty percent are taking algebra, and the rest are taking math eight, which is pre-algebra. What you're seeing in all the programs is ramping it up so that the majority of your students would be taking some components of algebra in eighth grade.
Okay.
And that will, in turn, increase your chances of success. The next slide, yes.
I'm sorry, can you back up for just a second?
I can do that.
Okay. I want to talk about our economically disadvantaged students for just a minute.
Sure.
We talked extensively last fall about services that we have available for economically disadvantaged students. Are we doing everything that we can to reach out to our economically disadvantaged students and capture them so that these numbers can go up dramatically?
Each of our elementary schools works diligently. The assistant principal, they are provided by me, the list of those students who are free and reduced lunch, and that's the only time the list ever gets released, is so that we can notify those parents that they're eligible for the services. We start in October, sending letters home. We continue that throughout the year. Our last letter just went out about two weeks ago. We struggle to fill all the slots. And we are required, because of being designated a Dini, to set aside a percentage of our Title One dollars dedicated to those services. Those services can't be provided by the district because of No Child Left Behind. So a student has to access an outside vendor. The only other thing that we have discussed is allowing an outside vendor to come on property and provide services at the school because transportation is part of the issue. We have talked with our parents about that. Most of the parents who aren't participating, from what the APs have gathered, it's because they have so many things going on. And adding one more thing to the plate of transportation and the taxi service with multiple children. But we reach out a number of times every year.
And is the free and reduced lunch the only criteria that, and again, you have to refresh my memory, this was a long time ago that we had this conversation, is that the only criteria that we use to determine an economically disadvantaged student?
That is the criteria for that funding. As you may recall, last year, because of the budget, we froze summer school money.
I do remember that.
We have used that for students who maybe don't qualify under the supplemental educational services but are struggling students. And we have used that with less students than I would like, but those students who have taken advantage of it have made gains. And I must compliment our outside vendors. They provide us a wealth of information that we're able to get back. In our time dealing with them, I have not had a negative concern from a parent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve? If I'm jumping ahead to something you're going to cover in the future, let me know. But I'm just going to pull out one category, but all of the categories appear to be the same. So I'll pull out economically disadvantaged because it's a simple number. Those numbers, the sixty-one percent, fifty-one percent, and nineteen percent, are those the state numbers or our numbers?
The sixty-one, fifty-one, and nineteen at the bottom of the page are the state numbers.
Okay. So let's take a look at that, because all of these numbers trend in the same direction. Am I wrong in presuming that it's sixty-one percent because the elementary school kids think they better do well on the test because their teachers are telling them to and they do what they're told? Don't laugh.
No, I'm laughing at the-
And in the middle school, they're starting to not listen to their parents anymore or their teachers anymore, so they're going to fifty-one percent. And in the high school, they're saying, "I ain't taking this test. I'm just going to mark what I want to mark, and that's why it's nineteen percent." Has anybody looked at that?
There is a piece that, there's also a piece for the economically disadvantaged, that high school students are less likely to have their families file for free and reduced lunch. That's another piece that you deal with more at the upper grade levels.
But even so, if we look at the average, it's a similar trend. It's seventy-six, sixty-nine, thirty-six. If we look at educationally disabled, it's forty-two, twenty-seven, seven. It just seems like the interest in this test goes away as they get older.
Well, I think as I move forward, I'm not sure of that. And then after discussions with students, and I think, if I just jump forward, I wouldn't disagree that there's some level of interest, but we test by the beginning of year. We submit a file to the state of New Hampshire, we test by the beginning of the year. When No Child Left Behind came out, everybody in the state of New Hampshire tested by the beginning of the year. What has happened between when we started in '06 and now, a number of districts, almost all of them that surround us, have gone to testing only by credit. If Lundary went to a credit system, we would have had seventy-six students who wouldn't have had twelve credits. They might have had eleven and three-quarters, they might have passed all their core classes, but they wouldn't have had twelve and wouldn't have been considered a junior. Of those seventy-six students, thirty-one scored a one and forty-five scored a two. Just changing the test takers and the percentages, all of a sudden Lundary High School has eighty-seven percent of their students reading a proficiency or better. And all of a sudden, it started to make sense for me because when I looked at how many we're sending on to college and all of the other factors that came in, I really couldn't understand why we were starting to fall behind our peers. And everybody has different number of credits, because a lot of people have different number of credits required for graduation. So even twelve would be high, and you'll see that on my next slide. In terms of, if we looked at our subgroup, because this is why Lundary is considered a Dini. It's in math, not reading, but it's our special ed subgroup. And a number of these students would not qualify either, but I decided to look at it from what if we went down to ten and a half credits? I consulted with Mike Dolph and I said, "Tell me what would be realistic," you know, that the majority of students would be on track and in good standing. And he came up with a ten and a half credit requirement. That would mean twenty-seven students. Now remarkably, four of them scored a three, were proficient. Fifteen scored a two and eight scored a one. But all of a sudden, you look at your subgroup of special ed students in reading, and you have forty-five percent at proficient, which is, all of a sudden, you're above the state. And you're more in line with your neighboring towns. And you can see how the percentage changes.
And the neighboring towns have less credit requirements?
Correct. Correct. And you determine what your credit requirement is. I was told by the state, because I called to ask, you can do your kneecap by the beginning of the year, you can do it by credits, you determine the credits, or you could also do it by anticipated year of graduation. And if you think about some of our students who are on an IEP, who will be with us to twenty-one years old, then you could start to look at what would be the most appropriate time to test them as opposed to just when they are starting their third year of high school. So there are a number of factors that, it's getting more difficult to use this data as a state tool since the state has all different definitions. I thought it was also very important to share with the community and the board, those thirty-five students that are struggling readers are very important to us. And we track, and this is an example tracking the class of two thousand and fourteen. The purple line up top is your average students in the class of two thousand and fourteen, and they're reading at about the eleventh grade, fifth month. The group of students that we were just talking about that are in the twos and the ones that are identified coming out of the middle school and agree to be in the reading program, because not all parents will take us up on our offer, have made significant gains. This was part of a presentation last year by Amy Demeo. It was also part of the Penny Kittle discussion about, we have really tailored our book selection to junior interests. And what we're seeing, it's more important to read than to just read the, what I would call maybe the approved list. So there are pieces there. Amy takes it a step further. This, on the left-hand column usually would be the names, we track every student who comes in and is either categorized as an at-risk reader or has maybe struggled in eighth grade in their language arts. And we administer the Gates-McGinty test. We do it at the beginning of the year, we do it in the winter, we do it in the spring. We can see that we had two students who actually during this year's testing moved over and were proficient. I think people have to realize that not all of our students are readers by the time they are in high school. A number of these students are on IEPs, this is part of their IEP, and they're making progress. And I think it's really important that we understand that the kneecap gives us that, you know, helicopter view, where we get to look down and take a snapshot of the entire district at once. But this data is more, as a parent, what I want to see. How is my child doing, and what steps are we taking to assist them?
So Andy, I'm going to ask a question of you because it seems to me that you're telling us that we can slice and dice these numbers to get the numbers that we want, right? So, you know, some-
That's the headline.
That is the headline. I think what my question is, is, you know, what's reality for us? What do we want to standardize ourselves on? You know, do we want to continue with beginning of the year? You know, I'm looking at this chart, and there's some significant gains here in the programs that we have in place. I look at, example with Manchester, I heard there, you know, because of the budgetary issues that they're having, they're thinking of reducing the number of credits to graduate, which only benefits them in these types of tests. Where do we want to be? I mean, what's the feeling here?
What I would suggest to the board is, Mr. Parent, Mr. Dolph, and myself and a number of other staff members are having discussions about this. I'm not sure I would want to recommend that we change right now, but I do want to make sure everybody understands that we're not always comparing apples to apples. Manchester, like us, is one of the districts that uses beginning of year. They're one of the few locals. You'd have, the next one, you'd have to go all the way over to Plastow and Timbaland. One of the difficulties you run into, especially with the test moving to the spring in two thousand and fourteen, is if I'm a senior who didn't have enough credits when I was a junior to take the kneecaps, and now I have to sit for a kneecap test in May of my senior year, I'm not sure our scores will get much better. So I mean, it's, I would like to come back to the board after some further thought and study on that and maybe make a recommendation, but we really have to be conscious of that. It is interesting. Occasionally, I have read articles about, you know, a district or a school making significant gains. After calling them and talking to them, most of those significant gains happened in the year they went from beginning of year to credits.
So that being said, all right, how we actually report it and when we do it, but what do we want to standardize internally on that gives us a good benchmark as well? Okay, so I'm seeing those two things, right? I'm seeing, you pull out numbers that say, this is what we're gleaning out of this, and then it's, how do we report it? So I think when you come back, that we get both those things.
Right. And even at the end, I'm going to give you some clarity on how we use the multiple assessments we have, because I think we do gather some great data out of kneecap. And I think there have been a lot of positive changes to education as a result of No Child Left Behind. So it's a matter of looking at all the data as opposed to taking one snapshot and making a decision.
John?
Just to piggyback on what you and Steve said, you're right. The headline is Lundary falls short. And it looks like the reason for it, you know, again, structural deficiencies with the test, Steve's very apt point that by the time you're a junior or senior in high school, yeah, I've heard anecdotal stories that people just buzz through these things and, you know, check any old answer to get out of the room. And then there's the question of what standards we hold ourselves to versus the other communities. And, you know, if we're not playing the reporting game the same way other people are, it gives us an apparent disadvantage. But even more, or just as significantly, I guess, we got to bear in mind when we report this, that there are always going to be people who, for political expediency or some other reason, are always going to look for a way to say that the schools aren't doing well. The schools are failing because we're not making this progress against the kneecaps. And it just worries me that we're giving the naysayers a point of so-called proof that they can point to. One of the things that we hear about a lot is that test scores are going down, but costs per student are going up, therefore, there's no connection between student performance and student spending, and all this kind of stuff. And it concerns me about the message that we're letting go out into the community, particularly among people who want nothing better than to tear us down to begin with.
I think one of the issues, issue that we have to make sure we pound home again and again, is that you've got to look at the end result and what's the appropriate planning and programming for students. Let me give you a specific example. If you look at Andy's chart with our special ed students who took the assessment when they had appropriate number of credits, that percent for proficient is very close to the percent of our special ed students that went on to two- and four-year schools. percent of our special ed students that went on to two- and four-year schools. All right? So what we're looking at is what we consider to be appropriate programming for students. All of a sudden, at the high school level, it seems, people forget that kids are still at developmental levels or at different points. Our goal, by the time the students graduate, is to provide them with the opportunities and the skills to be successful in postgraduate. May not always be at the same point at the beginning of their junior year as other students, because later on, Andy will show you the course sequence that some of the kids took. So that's part of the issue. So what we've got to do is take the long-term look. Now, as Andy had mentioned, the Common Core is shifting some of the required concepts, if you want to call it that, or standards. So our curriculum will adjust to it, all right? And that, to some degree, is going to be reflected on this particular assessment. But what I think is key is what we have been trying to do, or we have been doing over the years, that is, look at multiple assessments to see how well our kids are doing, and what we can do instructionally, whether it's curriculum, or time, or methodology, or materials, or programming, to enable those kids to do as well as they possibly can.
I agree with you. I just think that the conversation leading up to the last election has shown that we need to be a lot better in communicating these facts to the people who are willing to listen, because until we do, the people who aren't willing to listen are going to dominate the conversation.
Sure. And, you know, it's like anything else, what's the end result? Eighty-eight percent of our kids were accepted to two- and four-year schools. Seventy-five percent of our special ed students were accepted to either two- or four-year schools. You look at the schools across the board that they've gone to, you get the anecdotal feedback from many of our students who've gone on to college, how in some instances easy some of their college courses are because of the instructional programs that we had here. Our problem is making that very complex-
Right.
...response very simply. And I think what, and to some degree, I think we get penalized because we are so fastidious in looking at the data, and looking at how we can use it to inform instruction. And as Andy had mentioned, the state assessment is going to change in spring of 2014. The kneecaps are going away. The state is going to smarter balance, which is, we haven't seen the assessments yet. In fact, they're in the process of putting those together, and those will be spring assessments that will take place. So that you've got to look at, you know, the whole, the whole process. And as Andy is going to talk about in just a minute or so, where our focus is going to be based on this, on the items that we have determined, our areas that we've got to continue to focus in on. And to some degree, they're going to change from year to year, because you're testing different groups of kids. So one class of sixth-grade students could have different needs than the next grade of sixth-grade students that come up, for whatever reason. So it does become a complicated thing. And what people, you know, you're right. If somebody wants to take the numbers and say, well, they're not doing well, they can do that, but they're not comparing apples to apples. You know, it's, it's, different groups of kids are being tested, and because the way the state, the state is doing it, and I understand what they're doing, you can't compare us to another community that is only testing kids who, quote-unquote, are official juniors based on credits.
So this whole education thing is kind of complicated.
Yeah.
Imagine.
Andy? I'm sorry, Steve. But John, too, also to your point, this year, 227 people voted against the school lunch program. So 10% of the voters came out and said, that'll teach those poor kids, and those in need for special education. There's a certain set of people that just aren't going to be happy, and they're going to be against everything, so we've just got to do the best that we can.
We just have to make the facts more readily apparent than the misinformation.
And to that point, when I started on the board, that school lunch number, with about the same number of people showing up at the polls, was 680. So we're doing better.
It's not downgrade math and reading, and we do a little science testing, too, in the spring. That's not the only thing that we do. And so I think we try to pride ourselves on having a comprehensive program, providing a variety of opportunities for students with multiple talents.
Hey, you've spoken about that on a couple of occasions, the difference between, I guess it was, an academic program and a comprehensive program? Have I got the words right?
Yeah.
Do, how does that impact our numbers? Does that impact our numbers?
I think it doesn't necessarily impact the numbers from a standpoint of a kneecap or a standardized test. I think what it impacts is listening to CAFSA talk about the trip to New York, or listening to eighth graders go to Washington, DC, or the 18 DI teams that participated, or all our sports teams that take the fields, all those different things. And when I hear the word comprehensive, what I look at, and I think, as a parent with three children in the district, I look at it from the standpoint, there's, there's an opportunity for my children to cultivate their talents, whatever they may be. In terms of our focus, I mean, the kneecap does give me a lot of good data. I don't want to refute that, and it does tell us that there are plenty of places where we can improve. Grades three and four, our focus, you know, discussions this spring will revolve around geometry and measurement. Grade five and six in math is numbers and operations. Grade sevens, it's functions of algebra, probability and stats. Grade eight, it comes back to geometry and measurement. And then, as I told the board, we'll be looking at potential new math program, or updating CMP, whichever the committee decides upon, that will bring a recommendation here, is that whole sequencing issue. And that comes back to that Common Core. If we're going to be looking at, I'll call it, a majority of the students attempting Algebra I in eighth grade, we do need to make some changes. But that's not unexpected. We actually started that last summer in preparation, so we are well on our way, both in language arts and in math, and we'll touch on that in a minute. On the reading side, it really comes back to more of the think, create, share, and grow, which we brought out during the strategic plan, as critical elements to the future. And it shows here with the critical thinking, the analysis interpretation, informational and analytical interpretation. We had already scheduled, with the board's permission, Penny Kittle to return again this summer. She's going to focus on an area that we do note in the kneecaps, which is our short-answer responses. Students are struggling a little bit, you know, you just get that quick prompt, and how do you answer it? She'll cover that from the standpoint of not just language arts, but across the curriculum. We do want to stay away from specific test preparation and really focus on areas where students can get better at understanding the overall curriculum. And of course, writing across the curriculum will benefit them in whichever area is their One of the big things that's been going on is part of the Common Core, but just under a different name, is the professional learning communities. The boards have heard a number of presentations through the leadership of our three elementary principals and the core PLC team. They have identified what we call 20 essential standards. They're in the process, and many of them are done, of completing committative formative assessments. And what those are, I'll call them short, like a dipstick. I give it to my class, it gives me information back, and it impacts my instruction right then and there. We'll continue to use the Scott Forsman Unit Assessments as the summative, you know, the end of the chapter, what have we learned, what haven't we learned? And again, we're emphasizing those critical thinking, analysis, interpretation, and probably one that's really come out and been talked about quite a bit at the Curriculum Coordinating Council that meets monthly, is the transfer of skills. We believe we're doing a very good job of teaching our children the skills where we are concerned, and where we'll be looking to expand, is we need greater depth, and we need the skills to be transferred to, whether it be a trade book, a novel. Right now, our students are very good at doing the stories that they are reading, and are struggling to take those skills and now apply it to a novel. So that's what's underway right now through our reading department and C3, and will be coming to the board in the future, is what I would be calling a blending of the essential standards from the professional learning communities and the Scott Forsman program to really provide the elementary folks with more time to go into greater depth, and really focus on the critical thinking and analysis interpretation. Nancy?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that about the novels, because that has been one of my longstanding concerns about the Scott Forsman program, particularly at the elementary level, is that the children don't have that opportunity to sit down and read novels. And I think that that's imperative in terms of developing reading skills, comprehension skills, you know, understanding character development, understanding plots, development of plots, and, you know, all of the elements that go along with novels. So can you expand a little bit on that with respect to how you're going to manage that and blend it into our program?
Sure. What's in process, the reading department at the elementaries, which is made up of about 12 or 14 teachers from each building, is meeting, and they are working with the essential standards. They will be identifying trade books and novels that would be easily incorporated into the program, and they will be doing the pacing guide by trimester. And that will all come back to first C3, and then it will come back to the board for approval. I can tell you, it's very exciting work. Last month's C3 meeting was an exciting time, and I really am looking forward to how we integrate this to the Common Core. We have been doing the novels in grade four and five with success. We just now are really starting to feel that this needs to be brought down to the first, second, and third grade. If you expect, in the Common Core, what they expect a 12th grader to do with a piece of literature is quite impressive. And we have to look at this as a K to 12 solution. So the kindergarten is involved with this process as well, you know, starting with sight words and all the things they do there. But we can't just say to the high school, you need to ramp it up. That will not work. We need to give our students at the elementary schools the foundation. So it'll take a little time, but we will be back here before the end of the school year. At least, our primary focus right now is K to three, because four and five have a somewhat blended program. Those will be expanded on in the future, but we really want to make sure K to three is done.
Thank you.
In terms of what's going on, last summer, we started math revisions. Kim is leading the focus monitoring. We are working with two state consultants. We have an achievement team and a leadership team that meet monthly. That committee will be bringing recommendations forward to the board so that they can be included in the strategic plan. And that's based around, how do we close that gap for special ed students on standardized testing? The PLC implementation continues, and it goes very, very well. I can't thank the principals and the core team enough for all their leadership around that. And I would like to also recognize that the, what I need, WIN, stands for what I need, and as a student, that is being piloted itself, so they're able to get enrichment or remediation on the specific skill that they are struggling with. And it happens timely, not after the unit's over. It's quite an impressive process. We have teachers from North and Matthew Thornton who are scheduled to go down to visit because it will be expanded. We tend to do a pilot and then expand upon it and learn from it. We are putting great emphasis back on six traits, which is the writing process. We have internal experts who are providing those trainings. We have a teacher at North, a teacher at the middle school, who have been out and are extensively trained in six traits, so it's a very efficient use of our time and resources. We continue with our computation test to address the numbers, and we are doing writing prompts three times a year formally. In math, the, these are the six areas that the Common Core has identified. I would like the board to know that I was very proud to be able to go back to 1990, and these were the same six that the community of Londonderry said were focal points for their curriculum. So we have a program that is being reviewed. Again, we're looking at depth over breadth. And that's part of what, when No Child Left Behind came out, it really forced your pacing. And that's probably the critical element that we're starting to see, is our pacing too fast for the elementary student? And as you move up the ladder, that is just compounded. If I don't have a solid foundation, and I begin to confuse mathematical concepts, I can actually think I'm doing things right, and I'm doing two separate things in the same problem. So we're going to really look at our pacing, and our guides, and those will be coming back to the board as well. The middle school and high school, really the biggest thing there is that scope and sequence. We're doing a lot of things. Both schools have put in math labs, staffed by math teachers, which have been a great help. They constantly review our TI data. We've incorporated team teaching, which is a model that goes very well. We are starting to see a positive trend in our special ed scores. I think it's too early to say if it's a result of team teaching or that. We need more time to look at that. As I said, Kim is doing a tremendous job leading focus monitoring, and we have Penny Kittle coming back to do the professional development. And with the success of the Gates-McGinty test at the high school, which I showed you the chart earlier, that will be extended down. In this case, we piloted it at the high school, we have seen the success, and now we're going to move it down to the middle school. One of the things that we deal with at the middle school is the testing environment itself. Sometimes people forget that you're testing over 1,100 students at once. And there are many students who require readers or scribes, and even though the building's very large, it's hard to find a spot for everybody. So we're looking at the actual testing environment, and the things we can do there. We are moving to a looping of the case managers, which will give students and parents a known face for the three years that they're there at the middle school. As I said about the course sequencing, and really the piece that might come out of that is the middle school math program, and the number of credits if we were to go to that format. I will bring a recommendation back to the board in the future. The next three slides really kind of give you an idea of what we're going to be looking at starting next September and for the next few years. We're really asking our teachers to focus on developing those critical thinking skills, which are all over the 21st century learner, and part of the Common Core. The transfer of skills, one area that we do a tremendous job, we had a presentation early in the year, is the research component. I think we're ahead of the game, but we need to continue that. We need to provide the time on mastery for these skills. And the integration of technology. The board and the community has been very gracious about investing in smart boards, document cameras, the internet, we're using Google Docs. Those are all tools to enhance the learning. I don't think they can take the place of anything, but they can surely help it. Next month, we'll have a couple of middle school teachers, and if, those folks that are coming to C3 tomorrow night, will get to see flipped learning. John had sent me an email, he happened to catch 60 Minutes last weekend, which was on the Khan Academy. Khan was the first one. About a year ago, we investigated this idea. We have piloted it at the middle school. It has been very well received, and what it does is it allows a parent to participate in the learning process, because the instruction is done by video at home. A student is provided an admit slip and has to come to class being able to have three pieces of knowledge they gained. I was very happy at my house, I have a sixth grader. I was out, because I decided it would be better, since I already had a bias that maybe I wasn't home if it didn't go well. It went very well. My son had his three, and my wife actually had three as well. So it was a very good experience at our house as well. And Doug Stith, Rachel Christensen, Ken Robichaud, and our wonderful folks, John Bellio and Dan MacLeod, have been doing those, and will be bringing one so that you can see. And it will be expanded. We have a teacher at the high school who's looking at it in physics, and our reading teachers at the elementary school have also seen a way that could, they feel it would help.
Andy, quick question on that, and I appreciate, you know, you taking the time with me. We've had that interaction about the Khan Academy. Is there a way to take it a next step further for reinforcement? And that's what I've been doing with my kids. You know, I saw Khan get turned on to it. You know, I saw Khan get turned on, but actually, I'm doing stuff with it now for, you know, kind of refresher, even with what they're doing and what I do. But is there a way to structure around these types of flipped learning and video-on-demand type stuff that we can say, "Hey, you're in the classroom doing this. Here's some things that you can go home and kind of refresh," even to the parents? Because I know a lot of times, when the parents get to a particular level of a child's education, they may have had it and they forgot it, or they're trying to explain it and they can't. So sometimes that's a way to help reinforce at home and hopefully, you know, improve the kids all the way around.
I would absolutely agree. Last Friday night, I had to review my chemistry. I can tell you that a mole is 6.02 times 10 to the 23rd, but I didn't know that last Thursday night until we sat down. So I definitely see an advantage to that because we have a number of parents who are more than willing to help their student if they just had the direction. I think the piece, as I shared with you in the email, I like Khan stuff very much, and I think there's a benefit right now, and we are looking at that right now. But I think the piece that really excites me is when a parent can put their child's teacher on the screen and hear the message coming from them, it adds something. But you're absolutely right. I think tutorials is the next way to go and expanding upon that.
I mean, really, it doesn't matter where it comes from.
Right.
I think what's important is taking advantage of the technology where we have the portal where, you know, I think based on the numbers, a lot of parents go to our portal.
Yep.
Right? If we can then say, "Hey, here's a self-service area. What your kid's doing, it's refreshed by the teachers and maintained." I mean, it might be a little more work for them, but at the end, the result might be extremely beneficial.
I think we wholeheartedly agree, and I think once the people who are piloting the flipped learning for us, these are people that, when they stand up in front of the faculty and say, "This has a benefit to students," others are going to move forward, just as we did with smart boards and things like that. The next slide, I felt it was important for the community and the board to understand, we have a wealth of assessments, and this is how we make our decision around curriculum and students, is not the one piece of data. We have the Common Formative Assessments, the Scott Forsmans, writing prompts, COGATs are administered at grade two, Fast Math, and that's spelt correctly. I always have to deal with the computer on that. That is a computerized program for computation. We're actually in discussions about moving that down to third grade because we see some benefits, and as enrollment shrinks, we won't need to potentially buy licenses, so it'll be a good use of resources. We have DIBELS K to three, and even in upper elementary when it's appropriate, sight words, key math tests, Gates-McKinney, common assessments, Info and kneecaps, the competencies at the high school, midterms and final exams. I'll point out, about three years ago, we found that freshmen were having a very difficult time on midterms. They had never taken a test like it. It's, you know, it's a significant piece of your grade, so the middle school took on the challenge in their social studies department, where the second, first half of the year, they teach the children how to prepare for a midterm or a final. You know, they literally make them keep binders and all their information and all those facts. And then the second half of the year, they teach them how to study for one, and we are starting to see some benefits. Then obviously, we have the PSATs, the SAT and all our AP exams. So from a data standpoint, we have all that. It's accessible on the Info site, which was developed by IT internally. It's our own program. We're not, you know, anytime we want to add to that, I go see Tom Kramer, and I don't know what he does, but he comes back and says, "It's done." And then teachers, administrators all have access to this. So we have the data, and we're using it wisely. The other piece is accountability. I don't think any of us in this room are against holding ourselves, our teachers or our students accountable, and we do that in a number of ways. And we start with a strategic plan. We have a curriculum council, focus monitoring. We have a special ed committee, a technology committee. We have regular department meetings. We have team meetings. We have core team meetings. We have PLC, grade-level teams, faculty meetings, city and Dini plans, progress reports, report cards in X2, RTI, three-minute walkthroughs, which are required for administrators, an evaluation system for all staff and parent conferences. So we hold our staff very, very accountable. I can guarantee you that the superintendent reads every one of those evaluations. And I read them before him, and I put my notes on them as well. And it's something we take great pride in. It's tedious, but those are the people in front of our kids, and those are the people that have to be doing the outstanding job which they do on a daily basis. And then I wanted to close because I, to Nate's point, we end with, you know, with seniors graduating, and we have the class of 2011, last year's seniors. And we had one senior not graduate. That was really the reason No Child Left Behind started, was to get more kids to graduate. You know, if you watched the news the other morning, Boston was celebrating because their graduation rate was up to 83%. So there was real reasons why No Child Left Behind had to come into place. The numbers going to four- and two-year colleges, the number of special ed students, 75% going to two- and four-year colleges. Some of our students elect to go to work. Some of them elect to go to work because of going to MST in Alvin, and they're well-prepared for careers. We had 1.6% enter the military. And then we had 3.3% enter other programs. The example that we talked about extensively, we had somebody at MST in the culinary program. To become a culinary chef, you need to go intern. We had, so we had a young man who was up at the Balsams completing that type of certification. And then we had the NEAS report, which is the independent committee that comes in and evaluates our high school. And what they're ultimately doing is evaluating your school system, because if your kindergarten through elementary do a great job, and your middle school teachers work hard, that's what leads to a good report. Obviously, we have outstanding professionals at the high school. The administration does a number of fantastic things, but really, when I look at that, that's a culmination of everything that everybody does. And the kindergarten teacher is as important as the AP teacher. And that ends the piece. I felt it was important because in the very near future, AYP, which is the Adequate Yearly Progress, will come out. And from a statistical point of view, if you're using credits, your divisor is less. And typically, the kids who are struggling with credits are kids who haven't had the course material to do well on the test. I think our indexes will be good, but at the same time, they'll stay in the basic range they've stayed in since we started the testing. And please recall that the indexes continue to go up every year. Any other questions that I can answer? And I apologize to my colleagues because usually the reorganization meeting is a rather short one, but with AYP coming out, I felt it was important to get this out tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. And you've taken up all your time for the next four or five meetings.
I'll hold you to that.
Deliberation, proposed school budget meetings scheduled through July. Nate?
Right. Yeah. What we've done is scheduled meetings through July 17th. We generally, tradition has been, we have one school board meeting in July. This basically follows pretty much the same pattern and schedule that we've had in the past. And what we'll do is we'll come back at a subsequent board meeting and propose a calendar for the remainder of the year up through next year's reorg meeting. And we've put this out. If board members have concerns or want to change the dates, now's the time to do it. I do know all these dates are clear for use of this facility.
Comments, questions, concerns? Do you need a vote on this, or do you just need a?
Yeah, you can say yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, there you go.
Everyone's good?
Got a vote?
Yep. Yeah.
Well, the question is, do we need a formal vote?
Yeah, you should take one.
I make a motion to support the calendar as outlined by the superintendent.
Second.
I'm damned opposed.
You can't say damned.
Can't say damned.
I can't?
You're on the board.
No, I dropped a bomb, and I got in trouble.
Can't say damned?
No. Stop saying it.
We're on the air.
So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, 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 I'm fine. I'm just wondering what it was they tore down in the Columbia River. Must have been barricades. I'm sorry.
Next. Yeah. Okay.
Ready? I make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A, three, section two, B.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? This is a roll call vote?
Hi, Steve Young.
Hi, John Robbs.
Can't say damned.